For everyone, and certainly when summertime comes and people start complaining about these kids on the roads again, maybe that could have been a space for these kids to go. I'm not saying that that's the only space they could have gone, but I'm thinking, who's thinking about them? Who's thinking about other things? Every kid doesn't play baseball, every kid doesn't do a sport a different, you know, with a bat or whatever. Some kids like to ride bikes, some kids like to do those things. And just as the lady said, she likes to Jeep, these kids like to bike. So this is not a new issue, this is something that's old, and it would be nice that those kids would be thought of as well.
Hello, council, hello, people. My name is John Insley. I'm here to represent Lucky Thirteen Motorsports. We are a sponsor of Safari at the Quarry and part of the staff. I'm also a member of Ocean State Jeep Club and a supporter of Jeep Fest. I'd like to start out by saying we got involved with Brad Hoffman years ago because of his professionalism and his community involvement in all of shows. Now, give a little background, the off-roading community, everybody, I was reading some stuff online saying that, you know, this is for elite people that can afford expensive stuff. My Jeep was $800. If you're willing to put some L-wo grease into it, you can get out and have fun and have a hobby also. That being said, your average Jeep JL is the current model. Average price is $42,000. Models such as the Rubicon and the 392s can reach as much as $100,000 off the showroom floor. Why do I bring this up? Jeep owners are not the wild, noisy, loud, causing havoc people that we get named for a lot. You run around a $100,000 rig, the last thing you want to do is bounce it off trees and rocks and destroy the thing. So, with this being said, these people also like to enjoy good places and vacation. They bring money to our communities and so forth, like always has already been covered. How did we ourselves at the Safari for the Quarry accommodate this? Last week in Safari at the Quarry, by breaking up the attendees into groups of 10 with a seasoned staff, having one seasoned driver lead and one seasoned driver follow, communicating on walkie-talkies, we were able to control the speed and the safety of the groups traveling. Nobody could get out of hand that way. Attendees got a five-mile, one-hour-and-20-minute tour of the trails. All levels of drivers were able to enjoy themselves. And what did we see during this time? We saw smiles for miles, families in full interaction with each other, in a world full of video games and social media. We are helping families to make real-life memories, and people enjoy nature with like-minded Jeep enthusiasts. I was on the Save Conley Park page for a little while. I think it's a great idea. I think it seems to be a 10-year contract on it right now as quarry, and when it's over, they're going to do something else with the land. I think that's great. It says it's a hidden gem on there. I also believe that. What I will say was out there: trash. Trash and garbage everywhere, from people trespassing, from people throwing parties out there, beer cans, old tires, anything you can imagine was out there. As a team, Lucky Thirteen set out to leave the property in better condition than we found it. We picked up truckloads of trash every time we worked on the property with Brad to get ready for the event. Brad also worked to identify and close up entrances to the place used by four-wheelers and dirt bikes that were trespassing on the property. As we approached the date of the event, we marked off trails and routes that would not interfere with wildlife or live forest. For off-roaders in general, we are one of the largest groups of environmentalists you can meet. We're in a constant uphill battle to keep our passion for the outdoors alive while preserving the forests and mountains and trails so generations in the future can enjoy them also.
If we could ask you to wrap?
Yep. Julie absolutely made the right choice in allowing LiveWire Media and their professionalism executing the team. Delmar Motorsport, sorry. It was joy to attend it, and as far as I'm concerned, we improved on a property out there that sole purpose is to be stripped of its dirt and soil to be used in other places. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council. Here just as a public, I went to Wyheim. My name is Steve Twilley. My father had a business here in this community for 70 years. But some of these people are talking about, I am far. I'm a motorcycle rider, been a racer. But what I'm concerned with today is your roads. There are so many potholes. Before we go making this a park, I'm with some of them about making it for motorcycles and Jeeps. But let's spend some of our money, if we can, on our roads. My wife rides now. I'm scared for her to ride in Wycomico County. I've rode all over the United States. We have some of the worst roads right now in Wycomico County. I realize your problem is money. It's everybody's problem, but we need to take care of our roads. That's all I'm going to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council, everybody that's here. Those of you who don't know me, Earl Campbell, I run Esearch Row undercover. And I want to start off today by thanking Mr. John Cannon. Last week, we had an event for a Maryland State Trooper, and Mr. Cannon blessed us with his presence, came out, made a donation. The trooper's family was very appreciative of it, and I thank you. I appreciate you coming out. Ms. Julie Giordano, she was also there. I appreciate her coming out. And for anybody that wants to know, we're working on another event coming up here shortly for the same family. I went on, you know, writing up a bunch of stuff for the last couple of weeks, and, I mean, I can show you that I've got pages and pages and pages. It ain't going to make it within three minutes, so I'm just going to wing it. Everybody has an opinion about what happened with this event, and how it happened, and where it happened, and everything. In my opinion, the reason this happened the way it did is because you have team executive versus team council. It's got to stop. All this nonsense between the county council and the county executive, it isn't benefiting anybody. It needs to be Team Wycomico County for the citizens. I don't care who's right and who's wrong, it shouldn't matter. The main thing that should be taking place is that the right things are being done for the citizens of Wycomico County. Doesn't matter if it's Julie Giordano, or if it's Mr. President John Cannon or Mr. Merritt. You know, I'll help, anybody that's reached out to me, I'll help anybody. And I keep hearing this little thing that keeps coming up, that I'm Team Julie, and I'll give you a quote that somebody said the other day, actually two of them. And this come from somebody in this room here today. They said, "I'm a diehard Julie fan," quote, and they also said that I drink the Julie juice. And that's fine. But you know what? Julie's been right about what she said. And when she's put out stuff and she's made promises, she's come through with them. And a lot of people up there on that council can't say that same thing. I don't know if it's a personal thing, or if it is an issue about she won and the council lost. It shouldn't be about that. Doesn't matter who won and who lost. I lose all the time. I lose to my wife every day in an argument, every single day. All I'm saying is, stop, hit the pause button, and try to figure a way to work these things out among the council and the executive's office. Everybody's got to get together and find a way to work this out, because we're spending legal fees for various 100 different things. I mean, I can go on and on and on. Like I said, I have so many different things, and I suck at public speaking, by the way. I'm much better behind a computer screen. But all I'm saying is, this animosity between the council and the executive's office, it's got to stop. For everybody that's sitting in this room, thank you.
Counsel, my name is Bob Harris, and I live in Pittsville, and I want to kind of build on that, on what Earl said. Reality of it is, whatever's happened up to this point in time, it's got to stop. The finger pointing doesn't do anybody any good, okay? It costs the taxpayer hundreds of thousands of dollars when you guys go at one another, and the big winners, no offense, are the attorneys. Okay? The big losers are the citizens of Wycomico County. This could have been a really, really cool thing. I would think that the folks that live in Shadow Hills would have benefited, they would have got, the people from the Jeep group, including mine, would have got on your side to help you with this parking, because really, you need one, okay? We'd have got behind that, and we still can. It's not too late. But we can't go forward pointing our fingers at one another. It's not going to work. You build walls that won't come down. And you can't let people hijack your cause for political reasons, no matter what side they're on, okay? That's all I got to say about it.
Hello, council, how are you? A lot of the stuff's already been said. My name is Jeff Pruitt, I'm with Delmarva Jeep Events. I helped Brad put on this event that went off flawlessly. We do several events together, so it's not just somebody throwing something together and hoping it works. We've done several hundred, or several hundreds, several thousands of Jeeps before, so it's not something new to us. When I was talking to Brad one day, I was like, you know, with the Shadow Hills, yes, they wanted to be a park, it's great. You know, now that somebody has been in there, and you all have kind of opened up to it a little bit, or this has kind of opened something up, you know, maybe they can use it every now and then. Maybe you can do a biking event, a walking event, something like that. It kind of opens the door a little bit. That's the way we have to look at this event. Not something that, oh, you know, we can't do it because it's a variety of this, a variety of that, and like the guy from Lucky Thirteen, John, which looks a lot different when you all dress up there. But, you know, it's something, we went back there, we cleaned it up. It's something we normally do when we go to places, we leave it better than what we got in it. And we look forward to doing that maybe in the future, or something like that, and going about it however we need to go about it, and go about it the right way.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Denise Harden. I'm a resident, taxpayer, citizen of Wycomico County. Someone who just spoke said something about hijack, and I want everyone in this room to know that that's how we in Shadow Hills feel. We feel this has been hijacked. We live in Shadow Hills. We have lived with this problem behind our tree line for at least a decade. We have been fighting with, not fighting with the council, but coming to the council, coming to law enforcement, Salisbury City, the sheriff's department, for more than a decade to have something done. What we did not expect was for the answer to be the very thing we've been fighting against, which was to put a Jeep event, a four-wheel-drive quad event, back there behind our homes. We've been dealing with that for years. Nighttime, Jeeps and trucks out there at night till 3:30 in the morning. Daytime, Saturday, Sunday, all day long, quads, dirt bikes, four-wheelers. Someone mentioned possibly having, you know, a place for four-wheelers to go, or dirt bikes to go. They've been back there. We've been calling law enforcement back there for years. We have, it's been a multi-step process. By ourselves, we did the heavy lifting to identify the original landowners, so we could go to them and ask them, can we go on your property and put up signs? Finally, they gave us permission. With our own money, with our own time, we went back there and put up signs. They took the signs down. We do not have rest, we do not have peace with that noise going on back there. In addition to that, once the councils, we came to the council, the former county executive, Mr. Culver, shook our hands in this very room and said, "We understand what you're dealing with, we feel for you, we're going to do something about this problem." Can you imagine our shock and our disappointment when we find out somebody else comes along, pays no attention to the work we've done, cares not for the way our lives have been affected, and decides, oh, it's going to be a good idea to put the very thing back there that these people have been complaining about? We're not people who are Nellies, we're not Karens, we're not the type of people who build our homes next to an airport and then complain every time a 777 flies over. But understand, for 10 years, we have had this menace, this headache back there, and somebody wants to put it back there again. I have to wonder, because Ms. Giordano is friends with Mr. Hoffman, and I feel for her, because I wonder, maybe he didn't represent everything he needed to represent to her when he went to her, if he was the one that pitched her this idea. I don't know, because it's just impossible for me to believe that we are in this position now. It's irresponsible, it's unfair to us, and I'm going to ask the council, help us. Help us with this, please.
All right. A couple of things, clarifications that I need to make at this podium. One of them actually doesn't have to do with Safari at the Quarry, but the first thing that I want to address is the state of the county. I heard at least from one councilman and a citizen that it would have been nice for the sheriff's office, as well as the state's attorney, to be a part of the state of the county, and I could not agree more. That's why I asked every department to be part of the state of the county, and unfortunately, both the sheriff's office and the state's attorney were unable to work that into their very busy and tedious schedules. The way it was insinuated was that I didn't ask them to participate, and that is simply not the case. I suggest having a conversation with the sheriff and the state's attorney, expressing how passionate you are about their participation. And next, as you probably have figured out, I will always choose to fight for the right thing. Would it have been easier just to give up on Mike Bowers and Sam Workman and J.C. Richardson with the accidental disability for our deputies? Yeah, it seems like forever ago, but yes, it would have been easier. It would have been easier, but it wasn't the right thing to do. Would it have been easier for me not to fight for Matt Lightzel? Absolutely, it would have, but it wasn't the right thing to do. Would it have been easier to end the MOU with LiveWire? I'd say so, considering the scrutiny that I've gotten over the last council meetings, to which I heard every comment sitting back in my office. But I was not going to put this county in a state to where a lawsuit for a breach of contract could happen. I'm not going to do it, I was not elected to waver, or I wasn't elected to waver at the first sight of adversity. What kind of leader would I be? I will not change my stance on something that I know is the right thing to do for someone in the room. I'm not going to speak out on something that I don't have all the facts because of political pressure, and I absolutely will not cater to any group to just tell them what they want to hear. If any elected official does that, congratulations, you are a true politician. There are many in this room that have jumped to conclusions, ignored the facts, created their own narratives, and I am going to say this one more time. At no point ever has my administration stated that we are against the property at Conley Mill eventually becoming a park. The decision to hold off on this was done prior to my administration and prior to this council. It seems many are upset that it was removed from the CIP. When it was decided by the previous council that it would be put on hold and the property would be used primarily for digging dirt, it was removed from the CIP, a five-year plan, because it would be 10 years before it was looked at again, especially with us having to finish Pirate's Wharf and West Metro Corps. What's interesting, though, is that no one from the community came out during that CIP public meeting, it was my first one, expressing their concerns. It only happened after I planned this event. There is absolutely no good reason why we cannot sporadically use the property for events like this past weekend that do not interrupt the dirt digging needed for our landfill, nor interrupt, excuse me, the surrounding communities. We got a call today from Deputy Chief Gary Baker, and do you want to know how many calls the sheriff's office got about the event? Zero. Not one call.
Can I just wrap, please?
Yes, I will.
Thanks.
Looking at the legislative work session ahead, the councilman Holloway is proposing, I'm appalled, because the last thing this county needs is targeting legislation with more government oversight that hurts and hinders small businesses, and that's exactly what you're proposing. It's inappropriate and absurd, and this event hurt nothing. The site and community are completely unscathed, no one drove past Shadow Hills, no sound could be heard, and the worksite will be in the same condition as it was before the event. And the last thing I'm going to say is, as the county executive, I want to personally apologize to Brad Hoffman and LiveWire Media from Wycomico County. This organization has endured misinformation, slander, defamation, and misleading rhetoric from many facets of the county. You've let people go 20 minutes, I've got 30 seconds. I want LiveWire Media, as well as every other small business here in the county, or thinking about coming to our county, this is not how we do business. We pride ourselves in showcasing our county as open for business and business-friendly. And those mottos were not displayed to LiveWire Media, and for that, I am truly sorry. Good evening, council members, council president. My name is Megan Alton, and I am a resident of Salisbury, Maryland. Many residents have already come here before you tonight to express their concerns, and I don't intend to rehash some old conversations, but I would like to touch on a piece that I feel needs to be hammered home just a bit more. Over the weekend, I had the privilege to sit down with members from Wycomico County and the Shadow Hills communities, and it was immediately clear that these people love their community so much, and they love Connolly Mill Park so much. And I believe I can safely say that many of us here in this room see Connolly Mill Park as a beautiful piece of land. I mean, that's really honestly what this whole conversation is about. We see so much potential for this piece of land, for Connolly Mill Park to be a space for all residents to enjoy to its fullest. Even the county executive and the team at LiveWire Media must agree, because they continue to push forward with this opportunity to host Safari on the Quarry at Connolly Mill, if they didn't see the same level of beauty this piece of land contains. As I mentioned over the weekend, I met with these community members, and I was lucky enough to be joined by Delegate Anderton, who stopped by briefly. And during our quick conversation, Delegate Anderton said to me, having sat on the Salisbury City Council, that I should know better about how these things should go. And he's absolutely right, I do know better. I do know how these things should go, and I do know how an official should be engaging with residents of their community and their constituents, and I genuinely feel as a resident of Wycomico County that this isn't it. At the core of this issue, it seems to be a lack of space for community dialogue. There was no opportunity for public input and engagement surrounding the future of Connolly Mill Park, and our community does not thrive without that type of input in making sure our residents are brought into the folds of these conversations. This is why I'm calling on the county to move forward with a formal park master plan and make a formal commitment that the will of the donor of this land and the community at large will be heard, that Connolly Mill Park will eventually be turned into a park our community can enjoy and be proud of. As I mentioned, there are a lot of passionate people in this crowd, we have a lot of individuals from across this community that see so much potential with Connolly Mill, and I think each and every one of the residents that have come up here and spoken tonight really genuinely want the best for our communities at large. I just urge the council to maybe create a space where we can have a much broader dialogue with the community and make sure that this piece of land suits the best needs of our community moving forward. So, thank you.
Hello again, Joe Venosa, Wycomico County. Sorry to speak twice, but at least you're not my wife, you know, to deal with me all the time. Wow. Well, I don't know if the county executive does children's parties, but she should consider. I think that's an example of the broader problem that we're dealing with here, folks. Putting aside the very dubious and frankly illegal event in terms of zoning issues that took place this past weekend, putting aside the lack of transparency, putting aside the year and a half of scandal regarding the attempted hiring of Dan Cox, the attempted creation of these big government positions in the executive's office that will only cost the taxpayers more money, putting aside the complete, just disgusting level of behavior that we've seen, I think this is the opportunity to ultimately consider feasibility of putting on the ballot an initiative to abolish this position. It would not only save more than $830,000 in executive costs, but would frankly, I think, result in a much better environment for our county. We are seeing tonight our fire departments having to come, being betrayed by the county executive on their funding. We're seeing our board of ed, our students, our teachers, our community members routinely, all having the same problem. The problem is the county executive. We need to be open about that. I know some of us are afraid to say it, I know there are people in this room who are, in some cases, afraid for their physical safety if they speak out on this, but we have to be honest. I was in particularly hesitant to speak on this, but one of the things that incensed me most this past weekend was in the debate with Salisbury City about a possible injunction to cancel the event. The county executive took it upon herself to post on April 29th a concern for the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex, where she pondered that if the city of Salisbury would enforce zoning on this event, what could prevent them from stopping special-needs children's activities at the sports complex? Meaning, she was willing to use special-needs children as a political prop in her disgusting display of financial acumen. I got to tell you, I really, as a parent of an autistic child, I obviously have a stake in this, but it shouldn't matter. It's a basic question of human decency. This kind of disgusting press release is the tip of the iceberg as to why this position is a danger to our county. And I am of the firm belief that that person is a sociopath who is a danger to us, and I will let the video show it for what I believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venosa.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a few moments ago, I heard my position mentioned, and for the record, I want to state that the only communication that myself, and I suspect the only communication that the sheriff received regarding the state of the county was an email of March 7 from Lisa Taylor at 10:29 a.m. that was sent to all county department heads, reading the following. "By clicking on the link above, by clicking on the above link, you may view last year's state of the county. Julie requested your updates should be no more than five to 10 minutes each, and she would like for each, for you to share all of the updates, highlights, and good stuff your department accomplished in the past year. If you wish to share a PowerPoint, please make certain it is prepared to start immediately upon your portion of the presentation. Please let me know if you have any additional questions." As everyone here knows, my office, the sheriff's office, are constitutionally elected offices. I understand that in the realm of efficiency and economy, that sometimes we are included as all county department heads. I understand that, and I don't take offense to that. However, if there is to be a substantive request, I would anticipate that a simple phone call would suffice. This is the only communication I received. It is not my intention to unnecessarily involve myself in political disputes. I did feel, under the circumstances, it was necessary to set the record straight. So, thank you.
Jamie, there may be one person in Wycomico County who doesn't know who you are, if you could, thank you.
Yes, yes, President. Jamie Dykes, state's attorney.
Thank you very much.
Jim Atkins, Morella. I guess there's been one thing that I can agree with that the county executive said, and that is that I believe Mr. Hoffman is owed an apology by the county, but not by the council, and not by the residents of Shadow Hill, but by the county executive, who stands by what she believes. She believes that getting an assistant administrator in a closed work session equates to being in an open session for the citizens to have the opportunity to make comments about this person and that position. She believes that was right. She believes that signing a MOU for 364 days, knowing that it doesn't require the council's approval by one day, is the correct thing to do. She believes that she can find a way around everything just by tweaking this or tweaking that. I don't live in Shadow Hills. I have not heard anything negative about what happened out there this weekend. I've seen the pictures, I've heard some people comment about how well it was run, how well everything happened out there, but it was presented to everybody wrong. The promoters, the citizens, and the community. There's only one place to lay the blame for all the problems that happened, and that all has gone on with the Safari and the Quarry. And we know where that blame is. It has now- It has now developed to the extent that the councils are gonna talk about having to add another layer to bureaucracy for the council to approve any motorsports events in the county. But apparently when you're dealing with certain people, that's what you have to do. Executive, uh, feels that she can sit in her office and I guess watch public comments and then come in here and storm and pound the table and make her comment and then leave and not listen to what any of her constituents have to say. We talk about needing to fix things between the council and the executive. That's a two-way street, but you saw an example tonight of why that two-way street has got a roadblock in the middle of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Nick Alone. Um, I'm a local sales engineer. I work at a firm right here on Northwood Drive in the city of Salisbury. Um, I'm a board member with the Ocean City Jeep Club. Um, it's a 503 non, not-for-profit organization. I'm also the owner of Lucky 13 Motorsports, uh, assistant with Safari Quarry. Obviously, I'm out here in support of the event. My daughter and I have been off-roading in neighboring states, um, pretty much since she's been six, sitting right here next to me. It's wholeheartedly been our bond as a family. We don't play sports. She's outgrown going to the parks, you know? Um, you try, we don't go sit on the beach. Um, this is what we do. You know, when we get up and we say, hey, this weekend, we're gonna go, that's, that, that's what we, we head off and do. The reason why I mention this is when we were out there last weekend, I saw those family moments happen. And to me, that's what this is all about. Bringing people together, I have a passion for it. It's why we started a company around it, uh, because I'm wholehearted with my family. It's fully involved with this. Uh, my wife is out there helping us pick up trash, you know, on his property that Mr. Enzley already shared those, uh, those comments on. Uh, I, I, I just thought it was kind of, it was important to share my tie and why I thought this was very important coming to the area. We travel all over the Northeast and, and with our motorsports team around the country. So, I get the, I'm, I'm very fortunate to be able to see different parts and, um, bringing this in the local format, you know, for this to be able to be here, a lot of people aren't able to do that. Um, we're talking about me being able to, affordable for everybody, um, and, and having those opportunities and it's a great way to do it. Uh, being part of that Ocean City Jeep Club of 1,400 members, I see it at our monthly meetings, people ask for things like this. Um, and so it's, it's, I'm repeating myself, I'm very passionate. I, I, I love supporting and being part of these things. Um, I don't wanna repeat what a lot of comments were already said. Um, an important part I thought to, to bring out here is, um, you know, keeping public lands available for multi-use. Usually, once you lose them, you never get them back. I'm not here to argue with the folks of Shadow Hills. I love a multi-use land. I would absolutely volunteer to go line out walking trails through the, through this part, you know, property to, to, so we could all work together. Um, there are other tracks in the state of Maryland that are available now that, um, has proven concepts are able to be done. Um, Wolfden State Park, which is out by Deep Creek Lake, and then there's also a track of land right over at the George Washington National Forest. They've been able to be run in a method that you can get a permit and you don't even need to have some, uh, all the safety protocols that we put in it. I'm not saying to make this property like that, but it's shown in the state of Maryland, they do it and it's being done. Um, so anyways, I, I, I just wanted to stand up, show my support for the, uh, for the event. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Laura Alone here. I personally removed about trash, I'm, I'm sorry, truck bed, truck full of trash from this property. I walked four, five, probably six hours around the property picking up trash. Nobody from that neighborhood has touched this property to make it better. This is something that we have done ourselves. We have made this property better. Now, the fact that I see this trash as new, I see that nobody has walked around and actually made the road better, but they do like this property for themselves and I get it. I have the same backyard. I do the same things at my house. The thing is, you should open it up to everybody. We love this property. We had a great time there this weekend. Um, how things were run, you know, it, that's not my part in this. My part is, I like the environment. I like to help the animals. I made sure that we weren't affecting wildlife, that there was a nest, we drew around it. I love the property to the fact that I would spend my time, when I am a small business owner, my time is worth a lot and I spend it at this property, making it a better place. If everyone else in that neighborhood could walk around with a trash bag, I would love it because they're all walking around enjoying this place, but nobody's making it better. Thank you.
Mike Goldberg from Shadow Hills, uh, to the young lady who just spoke, I would say, we haven't gone back there to pick up trash because we will be threatened by the county executive with arrest if we enter the property. In fact, I was threatened with arrest this weekend just for being on the access road, which is not owned by the count, uh, by Wycomico County. It is owned by a private landowner. The, uh, the county only has an access easement. Nevertheless, Julie Giordano, who I ran to, ran into on that access road, called the sheriff on me who came to visit and he determined that there was no trespass violation after he saw the deed and determined, you know, there was not a problem there. Look, y'all, we have no problem with the Jeep community. I found most of you to be really nice folks. Uh, our problem is with Julie Giordano and the way she has gone about everything in this respect. Uh, you know, she, uh, she, she stated that, that she's been slandered, that she's, uh, she's trying to, uh, fight to do the right thing. And yet, she tried to have me falsely arrested. She even suggested that the letter of permission that I had to be on that property issued by the actual owner was a forgery. Talk about slander. This is behavior entirely unbecoming of any politician. Absolutely ridiculous. I've never seen such an angry woman in my life. Um, you know, we, we have a cancer in this county that needs to be removed. It's time to, uh, for the county council and the city of Salisbury to take appropriate action. Number one, the county council needs to pass, uh, legislation requiring the council's approval to, uh, to, before any county-owned land is leased or licensed. Uh, the executive's unilateral authority to sign contracts for such purposes must be curtailed because it is being grossly abused. Number two, we need a referendum put on the ballot to change the county charter to eliminate the office of county executive. Too much power has been vested in, in the county executive and again, it is being abused. We must return to a more democratic system wherein power is distributed among the members of the county council. Item three, the county executive made it abundantly clear that she intends to continue and expand the use of the prospective Connolly Mill Park site as an off-road track despite the overwhelming opposition by Wycomico County voters. Um, and, uh, the only real solution at this point is for Mayor Randy Taylor to pursue injunctive relief. He must seek a permanent injunction. It's gonna be the only way to stop, uh, the county executive from abusing her power. My, uh, prepared comments, I had to pretty much discard here after hearing some of the comments from the, uh, from the county executive. I don't think she's really interested in doing the right thing, folks. Uh, she has, uh, tried to use tactics of intimidation and bullying. You know, somebody even wrote in, on one of their blogs that I'm the bully. If I'm a bully by standing up to the county executive who is abusing her power, then I plead mea culpa. But I will stand up to power and I will continue to do so and we will continue this fight until this form of county government is changed to something different than what it is now. We must return to a system where there is no county executive. She is not fit to hold that office. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Any other public comments?
Hello, Ryan Poe, Delmar, Maryland. Uh, first, I find it disturbing that our county council opens meetings with Lord's Prayer. I'll note here that we live in a secular nation. A Christian prayer excludes people of other faiths and people who do not observe a religious faith. I'll take this opportunity to remind the council that we are occupying stolen land and I would, I would suggest that you consider incorporating a land acknowledgement instead. Second, it is evident that our school system is overburdened. More, better-paid teachers in smaller class sizes in modern facilities must be an imperative in every budget. Full disclosure, I do not have children, but my wife is a Wycomico County teacher and my cap, my comments are my own. Finally, I'm always deeply concerned when public resources are utilized for private profit. The use of the Connolly Mill parcel, county land intended as public park space for a private event that excludes nearly an entire, nearly the entire population of the county is unacceptable, particularly as there doesn't seem to have been due diligence dedicated to the impact and on and concerns of the community at large. This is a large piece of land. Um, people have suggested, uh, an off-road track could be established, uh, perhaps a nominal fee pending environmental, uh, and legal investigation. Regardless, the executive owes her constituents a voice in the decision-making process. Thank you.
Um, I will say, a little bit of the hostility that we saw here tonight is, um, a fraction of what the community has experienced and, um, I will also say to LiveWire and to the Jeep community, we have never had a personal problem with any of you. I think you are all collateral damage of a very bad situation and that's not our fault. And, um, hopefully you guys will see that. I realize everybody had a fun time out there. There's a huge backstory on this that you probably just don't know because you don't live there. Okay? And I do, a lot of us did, I have lived there 18 years. To bring you up to speed quickly, when the property was donated, the county representatives came to Shadow Hills, they took it upon themselves to come to the residents and say, we find this very important, your input is needed because we have to coexist. The deal that was made with the county at the time for us to coexist was, as long as we can deal with operations of mining next door, dump trucks, excavators, no ways, that the only other thing would happen would be a public park. Period. Two things, we put up with mining, there'll be a public park, nothing in between. Okay? So, I want to be really clear about that because this is where this is, problem started was, all of a sudden, I guess Mr. Giordano thinks that there is a better use because the land is sitting there not being used. And that's just not accurate, okay? Is the mining important? Yes. Did we agree to put up with it? Yes. It was a benefit to the county, so we did it. Okay? In hindsight, if this could have ever been conceived of, the answer would have been no. The county wouldn't own that land right now and nobody would be jeeping on it. Okay? So, that are, those are the facts. That's why you see so much anger and frustration because this has come along and there was no public input. And there is public input required, okay? And while Mr. Giordano used the 364-day lease, the state law in Maryland, which you cannot usurp, does say that county leases have to be noted, that there has to be notice posted. That was not done. Okay? So, let's just, let me read you a description of the park that was on the CIP that she did sign and this council voted on, and she does continue to say that this was, the park was removed before her administration, which is not true. Uh, Mr. Cannon confirmed to me today, I believe, that the, um, CIP that she signed in '22, December '22, which, um, she jokingly told us, she was only 11 days in office, so lol, I maybe take that for whatever you will, that was the response we got. But it was voted on in March and the council voted on and approved that CIP. So, she cannot say that they took it off before her administration. It was voted on during her administration. And even since then, it's been on all the documents. Let me read you from the SEDS document from the tri-county council. "Connolly Mill Park Development, Regional, Somerset, Wycomico, Worcester Counties. Wycomico County to develop the Connolly Mill property into a regional park. The 234-acre property sits adjacent to the county's existing main hubs for recreation activities and tournaments. Henry Parker, uh, Henry Parker Athletic Complex, as well as the city of Salisbury's Naylor Mill Forest. Desirable natural features of the property include woods and elevations unusual for the area. Opportunities exist to provide new recreation amenities not otherwise available in the county and to connect the existing trail systems at the Naylor Mill Forest and Parker Athletic Complex, thus leveraging and enhancing these existing regional attractions." Okay, three bullet points under that. Variety and grant funding will be pursued. This year '25, ma- master planning process. This year '26, a later development to begin. Okay, our community, I realize I'm done. We have the-
Ms. Campbell, I have to ask you to write.
This is mind-blowing. This, this connection, will we stop the county executive or will we allow anybody else to keep talking?
He just stopped me. I think she-
You're out of order. Thank you.
She's gonna follow me, you guys, so she's just gonna stand here with me. Okay. Um, I just wanna reiterate exactly, beginning, exactly what Holly said. We have no problem with you, Mr. Hoffman. We have no problem with the Jeep community. We would very much like to have much better communications and understanding between all of us. Saying that, I am still here today to address what I believe to be very serious issues surrounding the proposed Connolly Mill Park and the recently held Jeep Fest at the Quarry event. The event proceeded on May 4th and 5th in spite of profound contractual, environmental, zoning, and ethical concerns. Um, some of these contractual violations were outlined in the county council's letter to the county executive dated April 23rd, 2024. Of particular note and something I don't understand, maybe Brad Hoffman, you can help me later, the event advertised for a 274-acre off-road park while the MOU only allows the use of 111.58 acres. The entire property is only 234 acres. I don't understand. Environmental risk. Uh, multiple respected organizations, including the NRCAC, the Wycomico Environmental Trust, and Sierra Club, have voiced strong objections to the off-road events in the park citing potential harm to the Wycomico River and fragile ecosystem and putting these concerns in letters to the council and to the county executive. Zoning violation. City of Salisbury has formally determined that this event is not a permitted use within the property's residential zoning. Not slowing down to take care or look, she charged ahead. Ethical lapses. The county executive continues to deflect responsibility for the park's stall development onto the council and a lack of public interest despite records showing consistent support, not obstruction. The signing of a 30, 364-day-long MOU bypassed vital public and council involvement and funds earmarked for the park's master plan vanished after the MOU was signed. These violations and ethical breaches corrode public trust and set a dangerous precedent. Connolly Mill Park was intended to benefit the entire regional community, not a for-profit entity with those who own 4x4 vehicles and can afford to pay exorbitant entrance fees. I urge you, members of the council, to conduct a thorough investigation into the circumstances leading up to and during the event, protect and uphold the environmental standards and zoning laws for the responsible future development of the Connolly Mill Park, and restore trust by implementing measures ensuring transparency and accountability in future land use decisions. The fate of the Connolly Mill Park depends on your action. Please allocate funds for the planning and development of this unique and amazing public park. Please restore this park to the capital improvement plan and the tri-county council comprehensive economic development strategy where it belongs. Let us preserve this space for the community, ensure responsible stewardship for our natural resources, and honor the integrity of our governing processes. And for those that want a Jeep, let's work together to find a place that was not already promised and did not have a plan and does not contradict the advice of all of our most esteemed environmental organizations. I, I beg of you that, please. Thank you.
My name is Fiona Valene and, um, I live in Shadow Hills and I just wanna say, I have gone to a nature therapy camp and it really does help your mental health and the trail to the quarry is amazing for nature therapy. Building an ATV park there would be a bad idea. Why not go back to the original vision? Why not go back to the original vision? I would also like to say how it really hurt our family when Julie Giordano signed up her kid for football and then took him out, because my brother was in it, and she didn't want my mom to like hurt her or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't usually dress like this for council meetings. About four hours ago, I was on Lewis Beach. It was about 15 degrees cooler, and it was sunny, believe it or not. So much stuff to talk about, and I'll tell you this much, now that's a hard act to follow. Somebody else said a hard act a little earlier. That's hard. I think the problems here are, have been highlighted, they all relate to the county executive, the current one. And in fact, she owes some more apologies. She owes an apology to the city of Salisbury. She did not even let them know about this event. And they've read about it in the paper. That's how they found out about it. She owes a real apology to Mr. Goldberg. If he had been arrested, he would have had a perfect Section 1983 Federal Civil Rights Act violation, treble damages for the county. She also should get down on her knees and thank that deputy for not arresting him. So anyway, those are a few original things I want to say. Now, looking at some other things that she has said, in one of her press releases, she says that the council, and it was a former council, decided that there shouldn't be any park there for a while. That was done in 2021, when the county wanted, the county executive branch wanted to shift money that had been, the county had gotten from the state for the park in Hebron that hasn't been built, the 100 acres out there on Levin de Shiel Road. All that happened was, you didn't do it, or that council did not do it. It just died on the vine. She's making that sound like you voted not to have a park at the Conley Mill roadside. That's the kind of mumbo jumbo we hear from her. Over and over again, we saw the same type of thing when she tried to hire Dan Cox as a county attorney, having fired Kevin Karpinski, one of the really outstanding attorneys in Maryland. We've seen this over and over again. We've seen it with Lightzel, the way she pulled that one off. Of course, that's now in court, and that's a different matter. The county needs to get two legal opinions. I'm going to bring my wrench. The first opinion you need to get is on this right-of-way into the Conley Mill property. That is just right-of-way. That's all it is. The county does not own that property, as Ms. Giordano claimed. And the other opinion you need to get is on the zoning issue, and Paul Wilber's letter that he has sent is not a legal opinion. It's just something to give Ms. Giordano cover. You need a legal opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Taylor. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I want to start saying that we are not against the Jeep community. We're against the actions of the county executive who managed to remove the original intent for Conley Mill Park to be developed into a public park, so that everyone will have access to the benefits and joys of the outdoors activity for generations. It is a very unique property. It includes woods and elevations unusual to this area. Opportunities exist to provide new recreation amenities not otherwise available in the county and to connect existing trail systems at the Naylor Mill Forest and Parker Athletics Complex, thus leveraging and enhancing these existing regional attractions, as it is described in the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland, 2023-24, page 60. I have more notes in my, on my page about, talking about CIP removal, but it's been already addressed. Then I have notes about the inadequate, inequitable MOU with a private business owner and a longtime friend to, with the intent to develop the ultimate 4x4 playground. The event this past weekend was fine, but it was held at a smaller scale, and it was even said by the executive that they had to change their plans, because it was covered by the media too much. So originally, it was set to be at a larger scale, just to let you know, and we have concerns. What is that large scale? How large it can be, and how much you can grow this event? We have questions, and we would like these questions to be addressed. When I asked, the answer was, we shall see, essentially. Well, that's not the answer. So I'm going to move forward and tell you that after Julie Giordano posted the video of having exciting day at the quarry in her Jeep, it all came together. They found themselves a public land that is also serviced with taxpayers' dollars to satisfy their recreational habits. Unfortunately, for the rest of us, non-Jeep owners or non-truck owners, the use of land will continue to be prohibited. In my opinion, this could be viewed as unethical conduct unless it is open to everyone. Dear council members, on behalf of all residents of Wycomico County who feel they got deprived from the future use of the donated land, I kindly request to help create a system of checks and balances and restore the future development of Conley Mill Park into a public use facility to benefit the entire community instead of select few. Thank you. And Nico wants to say a couple words as well.
So my name is Nico Taylor, and I am a resident of Wycomico County. I would like to share my support for Conley Mill Park. I hope it will develop into a spectacular place to bike, kayak, fish, and spend time in nature. I also hope there's a possibility of a ropes course or, and/or a campground to be developed there. Thank you for your time.
Craig Stoffco, Wycomico County resident. Literally, everything I had written down in this paper has been said already, so I will ad libit a little bit for our Jeep friends here. One of the problems that you have, you, county executive, when you do things secretly behind closed doors, is that people tend to believe the bad stories. We were told, not only was the park that has been in some form of planning phase for almost 10 years, not only was the park gone, but the event that happened this past weekend, very well done, from what I could see, there was no noise, so, great. But we were told that the park was gone, and it was going to be replaced by a four-wheel Carnival atmosphere-type, everyday Jeeps, dirt bikes, and everything else. So when you don't talk to people, when those rumors reach us, you almost have to believe them, because why is it all being secret? Why is no one talking to us about it? You'd almost be foolish not to think, worst-case scenario, you know, if the rumors aren't true, why won't she give us an ear? Why won't she talk to us about it? So it was done under the cloak of night with such secrecy that we had no choice-